Calling the meeting to order at 6:01 PM. This is the Board of Directors' regular school board meeting for Monday, August 28th, 2023. Welcome to all of our visitors, guests, and media. As always, we're going to start tonight with the board administration and or board and administration roll calls. Mr. Felton here? Mr. Burns?
Here.
Ms. Schultz?
Here.
Ms. Getzko?
Here.
Ms. Seaton?
Here.
Mr. O'Neal?
Here.
Mr. Schuler?
Here.
Mr. Henin?
Here.
Mr. Gerton?
Here.
Ms. O'Connell?
Here.
Ms. Payton?
Here.
Ms. Dimmler?
Here.
Mr. Veal?
Here.
Mr. Samansky?
Here.
All right, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We have no public comments tonight, is that correct? Okay. All right, moving on, the first discussion and action item, a motion to approve the attached agenda and addendums.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda and addendums as presented.
I'll second.
Motion made by Ms. Getzko, second by Ms. Nathan. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed nay. Motion carries. Next up is the consent agenda, which includes the school board minutes for the regular school board meeting on July 24th, 2023, the personnel consent agenda, and the business consent agenda.
I'm approval.
Second.
Have a motion made by Mr. Burns, seconded by Ms. Schultz. Any further questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Motion carries. This is one of our couple meetings that we do not have any recognitions or showcases. I believe we're starting that up next month again.
Correct.
Once school gets back in. So on to the action items. Resolution providing for a public hearing to consider granting a proposed property tax abatement. Mr. Schuler and we have a representative from Baker Tilly. Come on up.
I'm Ryan Fetters with Baker Tilly, and we serve as your municipal advisor. And so I've been asked here to talk a little bit about some parking lot improvements, how they might be funded, and that would be through an abatement bond, and we would need to consider the establishment of an abatement area. So I'm going to talk about some things at a very high level, give you a chance to think about this, and ask whatever questions you have, and I'll try and answer to the best of my ability all those questions. If we get down a rabbit hole, then I may have to pass some information along to Lisa. But with that, Baker Tilly, as you may or may not know, we're a fairly large accounting firm, and we do serve as your municipal advisor, and well, that's enough about Baker Tilly. But it's my obligation to Baker Tilly to show that. The introduction here tonight, so we're talking about the financing of school parking lot improvements, and I know you're working with the folks at ICS, and so they've helped you determine the scope of that. And the current or the maximum bonded amount that we're looking at tonight is $7,695,000. Now, this is the amount, would be the maximum amount set up by the abatement area under consideration. So we have enough parcels in the proposed abatement area to support that level of bonded indebtedness. And you would levy an annual debt service through tax abatement. I'll talk a little bit about this, there's really going to be two levies. There'd be an abatement that is generated through this, through an abatement area that you would down the road approve, and there would be a small, and that would repay the principal amount of the bonds. Then there's another small little debt service levy that would go along this. But when we talk about abatements tonight, I want to make sure you understand this isn't an abatement in the traditional sense, meaning that taxpayers are still paying their fair share, and the parcels that are being flagged for this abatement area, they will pay their taxes. The abatement in the terms of what we're discussing tonight is the repurposing of those taxes for an economic development, or in this case, parking lot improvement, parking lot improvements. And so the first debt service payment, which would require a levy, is in pay '26. And so the first three years, we would be issuing the bonds this year, potentially, and then we would have debt service that starts next year in '24 and '25, but we would not be paying any kind of, establishing a levy because we would use the bond proceeds, because what we're trying to do, as we'll show in a later slide, is fill this debt in to the existing debt service structure. You have debt rolling off, which creates capacity for additional debt service to maintain that levy. So basics here, the abatement bonds and the abatement area is setting up this, we're allowed to do this as defined in municipal statutes, up here, 469.1812 to 469.1815. And these are public improvements that benefit the property. Generally, it's other municipalities that use this instrument as an economic development tool. Schools through interpretation by MDE and others allows the district to use this for parking lot improvements only at this time. And so we, this process, you have to go through a public resolution adopted at a public meeting, and that resolution, which is down the road, not tonight, down the road would include the terms, you know, the amount of the abatement, the length of the abatement. In this case, it's going to be about 12 years, just on the principal amount that we're looking at within the terms of this bond, and what that public benefit is. And it doesn't require the property owner's consent for the property to be flagged. And really, this is more of an administrative issue. This is just to set up the abatement. The taxpayer's not going to see anything more, they're going to continue to pay the taxes. What we're doing is, we've established approximately 800 parcels that are in and near the project, and so they've, we've chosen residential parcels, in case some of you have a question as to why or how, what's the, what's the logic behind this. So these abatement areas cannot be set up within, in TIF districts, so we're looking at residential parcels, and we've selected about 800 parcels. And the way that we go about doing this is we say, here's that 7.6, almost, whoops, $7.7 million. That's the principal amount. We divide that up and figure out what the level repayment is over the 12 years. It's a 15-year bond, but it'll be 12 years of the principal payments. And we say, okay, the abatement, the maximum abatement amount each year is this, based on that allocation, okay? And then what we have to do is, given what the district's tax rate is, we back into the amount of net tax capacity, and ultimately, the estimated market value of the homes that we need. And that's how we come up with, here's the 800 parcels, this is how we get it, you're going to, I'm getting in the weeds a little bit here, I said I wouldn't do that. Here's how you get the abatement portion of levy, and that's going to repay the principal. Now, your debt service will have some interest too, so you're not going to see this, this is going to happen at the administration point with the county, but there will be an abatement levy, and there'll be a debt service levy, and this will be, how this will be funded. I'm going to stop right there, I said a lot. So kind of, that's in the kind of the big overarching grand scheme of what we're looking at here. Some of the other abatement basics. We're here. So, we flag these parcels, that abatement is then satisfied, okay? And so on paper, we have, let's say, these 799, 800 parcels, and what's really on paper, establishing the issuance authority, the ability to set up this abatement area. But that levy, because we talked about this, is not an abatement, it's not a relief of property taxes, that levy for what we're trying to do gets added to the rest of the debt service levies, you know, for the district, and that then gets applied to everyone in the district. So everyone's going to pay the debt service on the bond. The key here is, we're doing this in a way that's taking advantage of the drop in the debt service, so we're not going to anticipate any kind of tax impact, okay? And once we finish with this abatement area, those parcels that are flagged, in this case, once that abatement area is finished, because the bonds are paid off, they cannot be flagged again for eight years, okay? And this is kind of how the administration, the checks sort of goes to make sure that you're not, I guess, saying, abating too many parcels to, it's put some limits on this. But it is, again, an economic development tool that other municipalities use, it's not an actual abatement, it's a repurposing of those taxes, and yeah, the caption redirecting local share of taxes for, in this case, the use of financing your parking improvements. There, these taxes, again, this is a lot of information I'm putting in here for your reference later if you've got questions, so I pretty much talked about all of these. The taxes are spread against all the taxpayers, not just those properties that are flagged, can't be applied within the TIF districts, as I mentioned. What I haven't mentioned is this last one here, it's the maximum duration for 15 years, you're going to do 12 years, you don't need the full 15. You actually could go to 20 under certain circumstances, but we don't need to do that. So we're looking at an abatement of 12 years. And the principle, as I've mentioned, the number of parcels, of the 800 parcels roughly that we have here, that we can't exceed the amount that's generated in the abatement, and that's where that number that we have for the part amount, the seven, it's a little bit more that we could issue, but $7,695,000 is what we're looking at there. And then there's a maximum, let's see, any of 10% of issues, we can skip that, maximum parcel abatement. So the maximum, yeah, the maximum parcel abatement is basically all the taxes that, from the school's perspective of what they can pay. And then the specific uses, here are the things that MDE says that we can use this for. So, and as, I'm sure as Chris has talked about and helped you figure out the scope, it's all having to do with drainage and safety with parking lot improvements. It can't have anything to do with beautifying the area, so no fences or flower beds, that sort of thing, but it's all for traffic flow and drainage, retention ponds, that sort of thing. And in this particular case, we're looking at pavement curbs, sidewalk replacement, as you all know, at the community learning center, the elementary, and then the middle high school. So as Chris, I'm sure you all have talked about that significantly there. And so this is an illustrative example of what we'd be looking at in terms of what the funding sources and the cost would be split out among all of the different projects. So we'd have at the far right side, that's the issue summary, but we've broken it down by project because we had to go through review and comment, right, in order to show that, what the breakdown of each of those projects are. So we have total sources there of the 7.695 million, and we're showing deposit to project construction fund is at that first line under uses of funds, so total, you, I don't know if I have a little, do I have a lighter, lighter, am I going to say laser?
Yeah, I think it's red on the top there.
Thanks. Anyway, so the 6.635 million you can see there is what would be deposited. And then we have for construction, that's the actual project. And then we talked a little bit about how this isn't going to be a tax impact, but we're issuing these bonds before the debt rolls off. That's what this allowance here, this deposit to capitalized interest fund really is. So there's about $900,000 that go, that will come from the bond proceeds, and the bondholders need to be paid, even though you're not levying a tax. So how do we do that and manage the tax rate? We make the bond a little bit bigger to set aside, just like another cost, the payments to the bondholders, and that's what that $900,000, that's an estimate based on our high interest rates that we're using right now to project what we think will, by the time of sale, and to give us a little cushion. So we're on the high side here, what these costs are, is in our estimation. And so nine, roughly $892,000 is what would go in to pay the first couple of years of interest until the debt rolls off, your existing debt, and then we can start levying without having a tax impact. And I'll show you that here shortly. Then we have an allowance for cost of issuance, as well as for underwriters discount of about 1.25%. That underwriters discount, just to remind you, that's the cost that we don't really know what a bank may or may not charge. We are in a higher interest rate environment right now, we're still seeing premium bonds, without going down too far rabbit hole. We've put in an amount that is reasonable that they may take out of the bond proceeds, but they may not take any. So that $96,000 that's showing right there at the far right, they may bring cash on the day of the sale, and they take their fee out of that, so you may not see a reduction. But we put that allowance in there just to allow for the banks, that's the right of the bank to purchase the bonds and the fee that they would take. This is a graph of your existing, which is in gray, debt service, okay? And you can see, we're showing from 2023, you can see that we're level until 2025, and then in 2026, you see we have the drop, okay, as you have bonds rolling off. What we're doing is, we would issue in 2023, first taxes, I'm going to come over here, first taxes would come on in 2024, and then '25, but these two years, remember that $900,000 I showed you? That is being paid out of the bond proceeds, and that's why you're not levying for it, okay? And this is called utilizing capitalized interest or capitalizing those interest-only payments, and keeping the level, the levy at the level it is. And then what we're showing right now, and this isn't set in stone, okay, but this is just a level repayment of what the bonds would look like. And so, you know, that's a discussion for how you want to manage debt down the road, if you want to, we can move principal up, we can do a range of different things, but this is to give you an idea of what level debt service would be, and that you would still have capacity out in 2026 if you wanted to issue other types of debt, and keep that debt service level at the level of tax. Does that make sense? Questions there? And these are the numbers behind this illustrative net debt service. The far right is the levy, where we are, okay? So we are allowed to levy 5%, 105% the debt service, okay? So that's under statute, you're allowed to do that, that's why the levy is a little bit higher than the net debt service, that's about 5%. So you can see under the net debt service, or net new debt service, the 4.5 where we are at the top, and you can see that it cascades down as it's rolling off. How we get from that number to the over levy, which is what will go into the levy limit reports, that's the extra 5%. So it's 105%, 1.05 times, 1.05 times that number gets you to the over levy, and that's what that is, okay? So, but it's the same structure. On the far left, we have what the, and we're using very, pretty high interest rates here, just to make sure we have cushion. So we're using an interest rate of 5.25%. Bonds right now are selling probably, with your credit quality, probably somewhere around 3.7-ish. So we've built extra cushion in here just to show, so there's not sticker shock if the market were to move by the time we show, or we sell. But again, because the way we're showing the debt structure here and how we've shown it, or structured it, excuse me, the debt service is lower than where you are currently, so it's not going to be a tax impact. And that CIF is the capitalized interest. In the middle there, the 488,000, you'll see that we have the negative amounts there, we're pulling that off because we're paying that out of the proceeds of the bonds. And that's how, even though we have debt service for this bond, starting with, technically it'll be August, I'm only showing annual, the principal payments here, but there's an August interest payment as well. So you'd have an August and February payments, but the annual payment be roughly, based on this interest rate assumption, $488,000 there in February of 2025, but that's coming out of the bond proceeds, okay? There's no anticipated tax impact due to the fact that you are, you have debt rolling off, and we're going to fill in that capacity with this, and the utilization of the capitalized interest that we talked about is helping with that process in the early years. Some important dates, so where you are tonight, so I'm wrapping this up. Here, tonight, what you have is you're considering a resolution that would call for the public hearing for the establishment of the abatement area. And that's what the resolution you have before you is with regard to the establishment of those 800 parcels to be flagged for the abatement area. If that is to happen, you have to public, and I have here no later than September 15th, you need to publish that notice of public hearing for the tax abatement by September 15th. And then Monday, September 25th is an important date because if you were to move forward, this would be the public hearing on the abatement, or the establishment of the abatement area, and then we would also be looking at a parameters resolution that would authorize the sale of the bonds. And so that would give the maximums for an upcoming bond. And so that would give the maximums for an upcoming bond issue, which would have things like the maximum true interest cost or the TIC, which is the interest rate essentially, and the maximum par amount. And then in October, these dates can change, but this is just to give you an idea, could have the sale as early as October 17th, and then we would award bonds by pricing committee of receipt of the bids. And then on the 23rd, there would be a ratifying resolution that would ratify the award, and then finally, when all of the legal documents are signed and the money and the funds transferred, that would be the date of settlement, which is November 16th, as an example. What questions may I entertain? It's a lot of information, I just kind of went through. Essentially, as capping this up is, what you're doing is you're trying to finance, you're trying to finance these parking improvements without having a tax impact. You're taking advantage of the capacity that you have as debt's rolling off. You would be establishing an abatement area that's selected based on the proximity of these residential parcels near and around the project, so these parking improvements. These properties are flagged. It doesn't, it's not a traditional abatement where they're not paying property taxes. It's a repurposing of those taxes for the purposes of providing an abatement that would repay the principal on these bonds. And that levy that is for the debt service is then spread across the entire district. Everyone would be paying on that, so not just the parcels. That's kind of the highlight of this. I gave you more information than you needed so I could have that nice little wrap-up at the end, but that's it in a nutshell. And again, once this abatement goes away, those parcels, 800 parcels that have been flagged, that doesn't require their consent, and it's not doing, they're not even, probably even going to know, really. I don't think they get anything on their tax bill, but they couldn't be flagged or used again in another abatement area for eight years after this abatement area expires. Any other questions or any questions at all?
And as of now, we're saying no tax impact to the communities?
Yeah, there would be no tax impact.
I know you said that multiple times, just.
Yeah, and that's because of where we are now. So what we see here on this existing debt structure really is, you're dropping, your debt, level of debt service is going to drop. And so we're using capitalized interest, so bond proceeds, because we're a little early, right? But you need, you need to do the improvements now. So we've made the bond a little bit bigger, we've got the capitalized interest built in the bond proceeds to pay the bondholders for those two years, which are 2024 and 2025. And then over the next 12 years, you can see that just even over level, level debt service repayment at 5.25%, which is really high. So I'm not anticipating that, but I'm just, I'm just showing you could do it and what it looks like and that you still have, if you needed to, the capacity to issue other things that may arise. Or you can fill in those bars, that light blue bar, we can pay more principal upfront if the district has no other needs. So that's a question about debt management down the road, but I can fill those in so your levy doesn't drop. Because that's always a question is, oh, we don't want our levy to drop because it's so hard to sometimes get dollars to make to finance improvements. So yes, without a tax impact.
Now, let's say that within eight years, anything else needs to happen. Can we go back then and kind of add to it, or?
So you could set up.
People usually just wait till it's gone and then?
For parking, are we talking about the abatement area? Add parcels to the abatement area specifically for more parking improvements?
Possibly, or other construction or anything that would go under the abatement?
So the abatement, it's going to be anything that's parking lot or curbs, that kind of thing. Right now, that's all we can use it for. So you could establish another area if you had other things, and we would choose different parcels, I suppose. And I'd have to look into that whether, whether or not it's a new area or if it's just you're amending the area. I don't know the answer off the top of my head. One of the two you could do, whether it's a new abatement area, but you'd have to go through a public process much like this.
It's going to be the same process?
Yeah, it's just whether it's new, and I'm not, I, to be honest, I don't know off the top of my head whether you can expand the abatement area, but you could do a new one, for sure. But, you know, this, at seven, you know, $7.6 million, that was going to require, that's requiring 800 parcels.
And also, we had approval by Department of Education as well. We had to go through that initial approval process and give them the scope of what we were trying to accomplish to get approval, and so that made it through that process. And so, yeah, review and comment section of that.
And that's because one of the, one of the projects exceeds the $2 million threshold. So that's why we had to go through that. And to give us more flexibility, because you're kind of right on the cusp, I think, or maybe above. If on the day of sale, when we sell this bond, so we're anticipating, we haven't decided on method of sale, but typically, just to give you an idea, it's usually for bonds like this, we usually recommend, but we don't care which way you go, a competitive sale where it's an auction, where we have your marketing materials, called the preliminary official statement, which would have everything I've talked about here, plus also it would have all the particulars of the school, financials, administration, what's going on in the area and economic development, or economy, excuse me. And then we send that out to banks across the nation. And then they bid on the day of sale, you know, what the interest rates are, and the lowest cost to the, to the district would win. And so, so that's really how that would work from that standpoint. Any other questions or anything? If there are questions down the road, I know it's a lot, just love to let Darren and Lisa know, and we'll be happy to answer this for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan.
So what we're looking for tonight is a resolution for the public hearing at the September board meeting.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay.
Move approval of the proposed resolution.
I'll second.
Was that you?
It was.
Have a motion made by Mr. Burns, seconded by Ms. Getzko. Any further questions at this time? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. And one thing to know on the September board meeting with that public hearing, it's at 5:30, so we'll all need to be here at 5:30.
Send out some reminder.
That's a good one.
Making it a little bit, yeah, so we know. Me and Darren will be reminding, and I'll need reminding as well. All right, item B, acknowledgement of donations, contributions, and fundraising. Mr. Schuler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tonight, we have three donations we'd like to recognize. Our first donor is anonymous donor of the Central Minnesota Community Foundation. The donation is going to our German program for their June 2024 German trip for the amount of $6,000. Again, so that trip will be coming up next summer in June for the German trip. Thank you to them. Also, the Warrattown Mary Youth Softball and Baseball Group is donating $9,200 to our Activities Department for the extra cost of the batting cages that were installed at the middle school gym last year around November-ish, I believe. So we had one season of use, and they're covering the costs of that last portion for the batting cages. And lastly, we have anonymous donor to our Activities Department for $1,200 to cover any participants that need financial assistance in order to participate in activities or athletics. So a very kind donation there as well to support students who may have a need to participate.
And as usual, we can't accept the funds until we approve them.
Approve them. Yes, thank you for that.
So I'll make a motion to approve the donations.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Felts, seconded by Mr. O'Neal. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Next up, item C, second reading of district policies requiring review. Superintendent Schuler.
Yes, Mr. Chair, we had four policies, five, excuse me, that we're bringing back for a second read. We reconvened our policy committee roughly two weeks ago or so, I think, to walk through these policies with Mrs. Hewin and myself, and had some good, good conversation, obviously, as we reviewed those. Again, most of these changes were reflection, reflected in the, bless you, in the legislative changes that happened this spring. So again, policy 406, which is public and private personnel data, that really, really focused in on our, our public data, that our internal public data, we collect from employees, volunteers, contractors, et cetera. So that policy speaks to that. Policy 506, student discipline, as we talked about last time, that was, there were some major changes to that policy as our committee saw. Again, really talking a lot about the non-exclusionary discipline practices, not excluding students from recess, suspensions, no suspensions in K through three, recess detention, like I mentioned, removal from class. So just a lot of language in there that has changed this past legislative session. Policy 515, again, protection of privacy of student records, again, just a really more specific piece on, again, what is educational data, what is directory data that we can share or what we cannot share. And Mrs. Hewin works in that world quite a bit and some of the requests that she gets in terms of public and private information. So we walked through that. And then policy 604, briefly, just again, instructional curriculum is that policy. It speaks specifically now to CTE that you have to follow the state guidelines in terms of the state curriculum, and just for updates on standards requirement across the board, and including a parental review of curriculum. Again, it's pretty much in play already, but this really specifies what parents have the option to do if they want to review the curriculum or a specific lesson. They have some options in order to look at that, comment on it, and perhaps even propose an alternative to that lesson. So it's a much more deeper dive on parent rights on that policy. And then lastly, credit for learning, again, speaks to some of our college bounce, college in the schools classes, and also our PSEO and what that actually entails. So again, thank you to the policy committee for weighing in on that, and thank you, Mrs. Hewin, for some heavy lifting and our admin team. That discipline policy, again, 506, was a pretty heavy lift and a lot of changes there, so.
But it wasn't 30-some policies.
No, no, no.
Is there a motion to approve the second readings of those five policies?
I'll make a motion to approve the second reading of the policies as presented.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Getzko, seconded by Ms. Nathan. Any further discussion on the policies? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thanks, policy committee, too, for reviewing those as well. Item D, 2023-2024 superintendent goals. As we, every August, we have to improve or approve Superintendent Schuler's goals. Obviously, we talked about him in July at the closed board meeting, and I know Mr. Schuler also sent out his, the detailed goals in his weekly update. I don't know if you want to go into the high level of the four goals, Mr. Schuler?
Sure, absolutely.
And, you know, if there's any questions, we can kind of go from there.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair. Excuse me, again, four goals this year, and like Mr. Felts said, shared some of the, more of the action side of these goals with, with the board here the last couple of weeks. But just again, at a high level, that first goal, we're in year three of our MTSS initiative. That is one where we are really moving into that tier-one instructional practices, using our reflective practice teams and devising action plans at all of our buildings, which all have an active involvement in moving that forward. And we actually kicked that off today with our opening staff meeting, so it was exciting. You can see each one is tied to one of our strategic commitments. This one is under learner outcomes. Goal two, development of our strategic communications plan. And again, like I shared, what our hope is for this is to be really specific in terms of our communication plan across the district at each building. So what we're highlighting in terms of our strategic plan and all other communications and just devising a really comprehensive document that will be in the hands of our admin assistants and our principals at each building and how we communicate. Again, that's under communication. Goal three is again, implementation of our 2028 strategic plan. Again, I'm going to share a number of actions there in terms of getting that word out to our parent community, our, our community as a whole, and just sharing out how we're moving along, and then reporting back to the board each month on some of our progress, which I'll do tonight as well. And that one kind of encompasses all of our commitments. And then lastly, our fourth goal is just improving district culture. Again, through our strategic plan, we've got a lot of measurements in place now for how we're measuring students, staff, and parent feedback and, and monitoring that culture. So that is one of my goals as well. That is under the strategic commitment of our people, people in across our district, so. Any questions?
Hearing none. I'll make a motion to approve the 2023-2024 superintendent goals.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Felts, seconded by Mr. Burns. Any further discussion on the goals? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. All right, moving on to the review and information items. Come on up, Mr. Zimer.
I'll give you a much abbreviated, we won't talk about, too much about abatement after we talk that to death.
You get to talk about the fun stuff.
Yeah.
The outcome.
Going too fast.
Potential.
All right. So still working on the 2019 bond closeout items. We're actually making pretty good progress on the outside stuff, so that, we anticipate that being done here within the next month. There's only a few minor items out there, but nothing that's prohibiting you from using the facilities the way they were meant to be used. Elementary improvements, we're for the most part done there. There's one item we need the contractor to come back for, and that'll probably happen over MEA, just because obviously we're running out of time now with teachers back in the building and students coming next week. Middle school, high school improvements, this one probably has the most items that we need to do. But again, we'll be working with contractors after hours and probably mostly over MEA to take a good portion of that. The flooring in the hallway, working towards resolution on that, that work will likely most happen next summer. Unless we can figure out some efficient ways to work with some of the breaks, but we're going to obviously not disrupt the school session, and if we do, we'll bring that back to the board to update them. District office, for the most part, is done. And then the middle school pool locker rooms, we're just dealing with a few outstanding issues there as well. So greenhouse storage shed, storage shed has been completed. There's some grading that needs to happen, final inspection due to a technicality will happen when we're done with the greenhouse. And then plan review's done, and building permits been issued for the greenhouse. Excavation's actually going to start tomorrow morning. Is that correct? Yes. With the knee wall being poured, or at least the footing's being poured on Wednesday. So we're starting to make some good progress there. Once the greenhouse is done, well, obviously, we've got some water, gas, and electric to coordinate. All that's stubbed out there right now, just hasn't been connected to the greenhouse yet. And then the actual greenhouse components anticipated to be on site mid-September, and we'll continue to monitor that. So there's our storage shed for now. Obviously, not graded yet, so that's the gap at the bottom of the building that will be taken care of. And this drawing showed you an earlier version at the last meeting, but this probably has had the last, the most conversation and progress with the code reviewers. But basically, some sidewalks to be added for accessibility requirements, and then just building spacing to meet the fire code, so. Greenhouse, again, just the floor plan that we anticipate seeing out there in elevation. Pool improvements, I believe since the last board meeting, we actually did a walkthrough on site to verify scope. So again, So again, scope hasn't changed. If anything, we're looking at entertaining a few item, minor items to add just based on that scope walkthrough. And they predominantly have to do, predominantly have to do with some of the piping. So this project predominantly is a piping project. So we are basically, anything in the tunnel right now is going to be removed and replaced because it's cast iron. We're going to replace some of that with PVC. And that all feeds back to this room, which is the filtration room, and that's going to be built, rebuilt 100%. During the walkthrough, we noticed a couple of things with the deck drains. We've got a few low spots that aren't at the drain. And while they haven't been flagged by the health department, once this project's complete, they probably will be the next thing that's flagged, unfortunately. So we're just going to take a look at, there's probably a pretty easy fix for that, we're going to take a look at that. And then there was one section of cast iron pipe that associated with those deck drains that we didn't have in the original scope as well, so. Beyond that, there's a couple of control options that the consultant is offering up and actually saw that pricing today. I'm trying to get organized to send it back to the BAC committee so we can evaluate it. But we're still on track with schedule. We don't anticipate that changing. And budget, as of right now, that's where the budget is, but we'll talk about that in further BAC meetings, just to figure out if we want to add a few alternates, just because we're there at that time, be most efficient. Abatement bond, again, I'm not going to talk a lot about this, but obviously, the two existing parking lots at the CLC will be reconstructed and then we'll add that parking on the south. The elementary is basically some pavement corrections and then coating the existing pavement, millin overlay where needed. The middle of the middle school area, reconfiguring that so that it flows a little bit better and we can control some of that traffic crossing between the two buildings. And then taking a look at some corrections at the two parking lots up against the front of the building. And covered all that. Energy project, don't have a lot to report here other than, at the last BAC meeting, and it just happened to be one of the hottest days that we probably had in Minnesota with heat ex. The system was definitely being challenged a little bit. So we're actually having a contractor come out this week, and we're going to go through the middle school scoop one more time to see if we want to add that to the overall project and see what that means. So if anything, the bottom two numbers may change with this, but again, that'll be through discussions with BAC before we bring that back to this committee. But we do believe potentially there's something there. Yes, it was one of those high-stress days, but something we want to take a look at just due to the humidity that was in the building. Beyond that, any questions? Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Chris, thank you.
Next up is the 2023, or would be the 2022-2023.
I have a mistake there.
Superintendent evaluation summary. Have a little blurb here to read based on our discussion last board meeting. The Watertown Mayor Board of Education, along with Superintendent Shuler, conducted the annual, his annual review on July 26, 2023. For the 22-23 school year, goals that were approved by the Board of Education, Superintendent Shuler was evaluated based on those four goals. The overall goals, scores ranged from a three to a, from three to four out of a possible four for each goal, showing particular strengths in the management of the strategic roadmap process and implementing year two of the MTSS initiative. The school board consensus and the overall evaluation was a score of 3.4 of a possible four. Based on the rating, Superintendent Shuler is doing an effective job in his leadership role in leading the district, and we, the Watertown Mayor Board of Education, continue to support Superintendent Shuler's development and the future of the school district, as well as we approved your goals for this next year, so.
Thank you.
All right. With that out of the way, Superintendent Shuler, update on the strategic directions.
Yeah, again, this will be a monthly feature where I can provide an update on how things are going in terms of our movement and our strategic directions. Today, I'm just going to go to our website and just show a little bit on where we can find our new strategic plan vision card. So if you go to our district page and you scroll down, again, this is our current website. We'll be upgrading this at some point throughout this school year. But if you go to strategic plan and vision card, I've shared this out just a little bit on what this looks like. So again, our goal on this is, given the feedback that the board had shared, is looking at some measurement tools, just to measure our progress and how we're doing. As you can see across the top, we have our strategic direction on the left, how we're going to measure, what tool we're going to use, in that red column. And then a little deeper description of actually what we're looking for, who we're actually measuring. And then on that far right-hand side, it's the levels. So we have four different levels. Again, all are adjustable, but you can see it from some of our initial feedback from last spring. We already have some highlighted in there in the shaded areas. Again, this first section is under students exhibiting physical, social, emotional well-being and feeling connected to their school. In the description, you can see we have a number of tools that we'll be measuring. Primarily, it's the Sabre screener, and that's a screener on our FAST evaluative system that we can get some really good feedback from students and teachers in terms of their emotional well-being. And then lastly, I'll just kind of move down, employees reporting satisfaction at workplace. You've seen that staff survey. Those results are in, and you can see, one of the ways that we're going to measure is, again, percent of staff who agreed strongly, or strongly agreed with the statement, "I am currently satisfied in my job," and we have a measurement for that. Moving down a little bit further, the district maintains an annual fund balance, aligned policy. Again, at the end of the year, we'll be able to highlight that as well. And again, that's on the percentage of unassigned fund balance at that particular time in the year. Moving down, community education provides high-quality and interest-based learning opportunities for our community. What Amy and the community ed crew will be doing is an end-of-the-course survey, so we'll get feedback on all of our courses that we offer. And then that year-end review, and I may have shared that at another meeting, that kind of breaks down the total hours of service that we've provided, how many instructors we've had, and then just giving a really good year-end review, if you will, with that. And then again, on the participant survey, you'll see it, does it meet our expectations? Does a person meet the expectation, meets or exceeds the individuals, what they thought about that course? All students at grade level in reading and math by the end of third grade, again, we'll be able to measure that in K through eight, not just in third grade, but all the way across our FAST score measurement, just K through eight. You can see those, both reading and math. We'll be able to produce that and also using our MCA scores in reading and math in grades three through 10. Also looking at the graduation rates, all students graduate from high school with a plan to meet their full potential. A couple, we have three areas there that we'll be measuring. Percentage of students who start their senior year at Watertown Mayor and graduate on time. Percentage of students who graduate with college credit and career-based experience. So we're going to really take a look at how many kids, students with it, we are giving that, or they're selecting those opportunities, so we have a gauge there. And then lastly, I know Mr. Henon does that senior exit survey, so we'll be able to get some feedback on how they feel prepared when they leave our high school. Also, we have the commitment of all students, all children are ready for kindergarten. We do use the core advantage in preschool to measure how our preschoolers are ready in terms of their readiness for kindergarten, so we can measure that. And also, like I said earlier, some of our FAST early reading data, that we can take advantage of that for our kindergartners, our current kindergartners. And then lastly, all parents reporting satisfaction with their child's educational experience. Again, we have that parent survey, which is linked there and some of the feedback that we received. We're asking parents, the two that we're measuring for this year coming up are the percent of parents who agreed or strongly agreed with the statement, "I'm proud to have a child in this school." And then lastly, percent of parents who agreed or strongly agreed with the statement, "All the teachers and staff and administration in this district demonstrate a genuine concern for my child or children." So as you can see, we have a few that we just have to fill in, some of these percentages. Now that the teachers are back this week, we'll get some feedback from our preschool teachers on what is the right range there that we want to measure. And we'll have a pretty completed document, but this is an overview of the vision card. Questions?
Mr. Shuler, there's dark grade areas. Is that where we're currently sitting for measurement?
Yep, exactly. So some of this is spring data that we've collected either through the survey or spring data that we've collected from our, our map testing or MCA data. There's a few areas we just have to fill in, but we hope to have those in soon.
Can we capture that in a key or something?
Yep, absolutely.
And then how often is this data, is it like once a year, every?
Yeah, good question.
Spring, fall type?
Yeah, our plan at this point is to collect this every spring, so we'll be letting our parents and students and staff know that, you know, you'll be expecting that survey every year around the middle of May, so just be prepared for it. Obviously, we want a better turnout each year to get a wider range of feedback. But I think this document really does encapsulate, again, some measurement tools we introduced to our staff this morning across the district. And that was kind of the neat part, too, is that it, and one of the things I really stress is that this isn't the superintendent's document, it's not the administrator's document, it's not the school board's document, it's really all of our document. So for the first time, I feel like we've really got a neat opportunity for all of our staff to be involved. And as you heard me reading off those areas, we've clicked off just about every area in our district that somebody has a direct tie to this document. And I said, "We all own this," so moving forward.
And then do we know on the new website?
I wish I had a better answer for you there. Right now, we were hoping for MEA, but now we're thinking more first of the year. We are one individual short in our tech department, which has caused us to kind of cross reference a little bit on other jobs, and that one's just got put on the back burner a little bit. So hopefully, we'll, we're interviewing a few folks this week, I think Wednesday, for one of our tier-one tech positions, so we hope to be back to regular staffing there soon.
Anything else? Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving along to the admin reports. Start with Mr. Henon kicking it off.
Good evening. Today was a good first day back. Feels really good to be fully staffed. We were lucky at the high school, we only had one new staff. Actually, Taylor Soinger was the name for our new special ed teacher, but just want to publicly thank our custodians, our building, you know, it's with the gyms and the fields outside, and it's a big building and it really looks great, so I just want to thank them for all the work they do over the summer. Want to recap, we had a visit from Resource Training back in late July. Patrick Wallace was his name, he's the current superintendent at Belgrade, Bruno Rose, and he was a principal at Hutchinson, and he's a big CTE promoter, and he came out and he just wanted to tour our facilities and just wanted, he was blown away by our facilities. And in fact, his comment was, "We have the nicest welding room he has seen on all of his tours so far in central Minnesota." So again, and just with our programming and the amount of kids, he was telling me some things, and then I told him some of our numbers of kids involved, like, you know, for example, like we have five welding sections this year, and he was blown away for a school our size to have that many. So again, just wanted to share that because it was a really nice compliment to hear from somebody who was, I mean, if you know anything about Hutchinson's facilities, they have probably the best high school CTE facilities there are probably in the state, and he said ours was one of the best he's seen, so really nice compliment to hear. This week, Wednesday, we have our open house for the ninth graders. Our ninth grade has grown, almost 140 students. We've picked up some kids over the summer. So we have a, you know, they'll actually get a chance to walk their schedule, they'll get to spend about five, six minutes with each of their teachers and their advisor. There's a chance for parents just to talk to me and Mr. Behrens and the counselors as well, while the kids are kind of pushed on their own to take that tour. And again, it's usually a pretty highly attended event, and it's something, again, to kind of ease that transition. A lot of them have been in the high school before, but just the idea that it's still, it's different, you know, and it's, they'll have a chance to meet all their first-quarter teachers. And then lastly, as of now, we, you know, scheduling is pretty much set for the high school. We do, we've had a lot of new students in the last two weeks. I think we're up to 29 new students now, coming from a variety of areas, but I mean, you know, some of the program we have has been an allure for some people, but we probably got a handful, I think we just picked up three more today, so this week's, we're kind of just catching up and trying to make sure everybody's fully scheduled for that first day. But again, that's a positive thing, we're glad we're doing that. But I think, like I said, I checked today, we're up to 29 new students, so. Any questions?
All in the ninth grade or?
No, just in general. They're a pretty high concentration in ninth and 10th grade. But, you know, again, we get, there's some seniors, there's a few juniors, too, but, and again, for a variety of reasons, but we've had, again, some of the programming has made a big difference from, we had two kids who came here specifically because their school wouldn't allow them to work experiences as juniors, and we do, so they came here. So, you know, I mean, just little things like that make a difference, and again, I think that's a compliment to the programming we have.
And Mr. Henon, keep track of that, sort of why those students are coming into the district. And we need to foster that stuff, so.
Yeah, I've had a chance to meet, I would say, probably three-quarters of the family so far, and that's usually one of the questions we always ask, is just, you know, why Watertown Mayor, and just trying to get a gauge. And again, some moved here, but, you know, they still have choices, and the ones that are, you know, and they're picking for a variety, and again, college in the schools has been, it's a big allure for people, too. And just in general, the different choices that we're not, you know, reducing programs, we're maintaining, if not adding or changing.
That's good.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Gerton.
Really nice first day back with staff today. I want to echo what Mr. Henon said. Building is in great shape. A lot of these little loose ends have been taken care of. I thank our custodians. We actually finished up all the carpet replacement in the building today, so that is done. So rooms are looking great, but the school is looking wonderful, thanks to our custodial staff. We've hired a total of seven new staff this year at the middle school. Three of those are teachers that are actually alumni, which is really cool. I said to staff today, "You're a great feeder program for recruiting teachers," and we've just had just awesome luck with former graduates coming back, so really excited about that. Fifth grade open house and orientation kicked off last week, went very smoothly. I just have to thank our eighth grade mentors, that program continues to just be very successful, and Ashley Wise, she coordinates that, one of our sixth grade teachers. This week, we'll do open house for sixth through eighth on Wednesday. Families will come in and more of a traditional open house. We expect a high turnout rate there. Couple of other things, spent quite a bit of time with their leadership team a couple weeks ago, just kind of looking at data and trying to align with the district strategic plan. I like what we're doing. I like that we're really trying to align measurable goals. And in the middle school, the focus is staying the course in terms of MTSS. We worked hard to try to get our behavior piece under control in the last couple of years, so kids have a better support system for ultimately self-regulating. Now we need to look at instruction. So today, I just was very straightforward with staff about, our number needs to get to 85% of our students that are meeting, you know, academic expectations and behavioral expectations, then we can focus on the 15 with additional supports, but that's where we need to go. And so that'll be kind of our marching orders moving forward this year, and I'll put my time into that and kind of stepping back a little bit from the behavior side now that we have an interventionist that's really taken the lead on that. So that's where we're going with those things. Other than that, I think just want to thank our technology department, they've been understaffed, but continue to just get our building ready on the technology side. Still have a lot of families that access that Chromebook through the district. And again, the facilities pieces, the updates look great, our parking lot, we're through that, you know, first year with the new parking lot rules, so things are really moving smoothly. Couple of last-minute things just to wrap up here, some programming refinements. One big piece, we, using Grant Dollars, hired a paraprofessional, and she'll be coming in, and her sole purpose will be connecting with kids that struggle in gen ed classes, students without IEPs that maybe need an alternative workspace, that flexibility. We have a room that we've dedicated for kids that need that outlet. They sometimes have a hard time in a classroom, and it can lead to, you know, present itself as disruptive. So she'll be working with our behavior and interventionist, Jenna Olson. So, she'll be working with our behavior interventionist, Jenna Olson. Our STEM program is launching this year, super excited about that. Melinda Young will lead that. She put in over 100 required hours of training on a program that is just very technical, but I'm very excited about that. We have an environmental science exploratory course that has been developed by Nathaniel Nordberg, and that'll include some plant science and just a lot of the environmental kinds of things that are not a part of our standards. And then we've got a couple of prep courses that we're adding for kids in seventh and eighth grade that literally just, they can't get work done. And these are kids, again, that don't have IEPs but have some of the same challenges. So, just trying to be very responsive and adaptive to all our kids in our building. So, good fresh start, looking forward to it. So, any questions, comments from anybody? Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. O'Connell.
It was a great first day back. It was fun to have the building buzzing with people again. This summer, we worked on some beautification projects around the elementary, so we reformatted the front office. So, our new secretary, Kayla Johnson, who's an alum and has a first grader in our building, is sitting right up front in that little bay by the window, so both her and Nikki are kind of together and have the ability to collaborate. We also rearranged and reconfigured the space in our media center. And then the gym got a fresh coat of paint to cover kind of marks from where basketballs hit it during the day. In addition to those things, some money from Strides for Students. The PTO has put those towards getting a drop-down screen in the gym for our assemblies, and a large, I think it's 86 inches, screen in the media center that we can use for staff meetings, but also for when kids are in there to kind of have interactive experiences and have them see videos about authors. New staff, we have Kayla Johnson as our new secretary, who I mentioned already, Kimberly Archibald, who is an evaluation coordinator, Abby Vasquez, who is joining us as our school counselor, Lauren Hagan, who will be filling in in kindergarten, Emily Narlock, who's taking a first grade position, Hannah Roshold, who's also an alum, is coming as our music teacher. And then Angie Johnson, who has been one of our teachers, is moving into an intervention EL Title I coordinator role. So, lots of changes, but all great changes for the upcoming school year. So, no, we're going to have a great year. We are still looking for three additional paraprofessionals to join our team. We shared one with Nick. I wish we hadn't let her go, but if you know anyone who's looking, we do have three that we're looking for still, so have them reach out to me. In addition to two math tutors from MathCor, we also have those spots to fill. Today, we welcomed our teachers back and had our theme that we unveiled, which is strengthening our core for Tier One instruction. We'll also be working on our own efficacy, and that message will carry through with kids, too, on working with efficacy. I had to get a little creative in my attempts to sell our message this year, so I couldn't redo the bracelets that we've already done. So, since we're working on strengthening our core, I passed out some sweatbands today. Superintendent Schuler has some in our royal colors, so wristband and headbands, just to kind of help teachers remember the message. And it's going to be hard work, but we're on it together. On Thursday of this week, our staff will participate in a half-day with Playworks, which is a company that we got a grant from Carver County Ship, a ship grant, to come out, and they're going to help us just make sure that our recess is a safe, inclusive area for everybody, but also make sure that kids have a variety of games that they know how to play. Because right now, it seems like they either know how to play organized sports, or they kind of recreate a lot of things that they've seen in like video games or movies, which can quickly go south. So, they're going to learn a whole bunch of games, but they're going to start by teaching all of us for three hours of games. So, we'll be active and physical, learning those games. And then next week, on Tuesday and Wednesday, we have our Royal Connection Conferences. It's an opportunity for families to come in and get to know a little bit about the classroom that their child will be joining, but also for us to get to know a bit about that family and do a little bit of assessment so that we're ready, day one, to meet kids wherever they're at instructionally. Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Veal.
I was wondering if the elementary staff is going to be wearing those sweatbands for that Playworks workshop? That'd be a great idea.
No, never know.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. Just want to probably re-echo so many of the things. It's first day, everybody's excited to be around and smiling and happy. Got great attitudes about the upcoming year and lots of high expectations, along with that Tier One MTSS. Each of the buildings is getting trained in on a review of what we did with Kim Gibbons last year, as well as some into the weeds, more about specific instructional-based strategies that are evidence-based. If you've paid attention to some of the new policies and new statutes, they're even talking about evidence-based strategies right in policy. So, we want to make sure that we're well-versed in what those evidence-based strategies are. And also, I mentioned at two of those team meetings today about building a movement. We want to build a movement. Ten or eleven staff members have stepped forward to share practices that they're doing in their classroom, so they're going to share that, and so we're building a movement and a momentum, and we want everybody to get on board and work towards a wonderful Tier One instruction to get 80 or potentially 85% of our students at proficiency rates right out of the get-go during that whole class instruction. As far as assessments, I received paper copies of assessments from MCA's, which they came last Thursday. We'll be handing them out potentially at some of these open houses, but for sure at parent-teacher conferences, and then be sending the rest of them home probably shortly thereafter. We will begin our fast screening pretty much right away, as soon as school begins, concluding that around September 15th, so we can start those supports for our kids who need it right out of the chute as quickly as possible and get them the supports that are necessary. And other than that, I don't have too much right now. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Ms. Dimpler.
Just going right down the line.
All right, hello and good evening. So, our building was a little bit different today. Instead of being really busy as it has been, it was a lot quieter. We were excited to have some new staff, or some staff that hadn't been with us this summer, join us so that we are ready for the upcoming year. Just a little update on our fall programming, our community ed programming. Our fall activities really start in full next week. And at the same time, I'm going to be sending out a letter for request for proposals for winter programming, so we're already thinking ahead to all of our winter programming and really thinking about that benchmark for how community can provide high-quality, interest-based learning opportunities. So, that's going to be our focus going into the winter programming season. In our childcare and early childcare, early childhood, we've welcomed five new staff. We have a brand-new parent educator, Amy Sinclair, a new facility coordinator, Tracy Taylor, and three new paras, Jessica Craddock, Stephanie Bauer, and Katie Myers, who will be helping with both our early childhood and childcare. Our numbers in both childcare and early childhood are up. We've got about 99 students in preschool, and we're over 100 in our childcare right now. So, we are excited. Our childcare program is full in all areas, and so we are doing waitlists right now. We don't have a big waitlist yet, but that is something we are looking at and possibly looking at additional staff should we need it. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Ms. Peyton, the inaugural time. Welcome, by the way.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Well, good evening. My name is Randy Peyton, our new special ed director. I'm very honored to be filling this position and representing the Special Education Department. I look forward to our partnership this year. In June and July, we had our ESY program. It's went off successfully. We work with kids that have significant needs. In order to qualify for these services, they must demonstrate need, that they would regress in their learning, they need support to maintain their self-sufficiency skills, or have unique needs such that additional services are required to meet our FATE obligations, so free appropriate public education. In August, we provided special education teachers and paras with our crisis prevention intervention training, the CPI training, so everyone got trained in that. We also had all of our teachers who work with the DCD and ACD, our autism spectrum, attend a course called LINKS, and that's an evidence-based curriculum. The staff was super excited about this training, and they're excited to implement it with fidelity, so that's coming up. In terms of staffing, we are doing well compared to other school districts. We have all our middle school positions filled, our high school positions, and currently we're looking for two special education paraprofessionals at our elementary. At the early childhood, we are looking for one long-term speech and language pathologist. In addition to the human resource postings, we're also doing blast from our staff for social media, which has been effective. So, a couple of other things that we're excited about, we created two EBD Level Three settings in our elementary. It's going to be called Bridges, and then we have one at our middle school. And it's really to help those kids with emotional dysregulation that needs some support, so. We will continue to provide compensatory services for our speech students who have speech needs. We also got a report from MDE saying that they found no findings of issues with our paperwork as well, so we met all the due process requirements. So, I'm excited this year and to be working with such dedicated and talented staff, so thank you.
Welcome again. Mr. Samansky.
One big thing, it's been great to hear having teachers back for their first day. We've been going at it now, this is the beginning of our third week in the activities world, so it's been a lot of fun. It's been cooperating with the weather as best we can, which has been interesting, and it looks like we're going to get some more weather next week, so we're just going to have to come up with Plan Bs and continue to work around that. Initial participation numbers are in, and right now, these aren't official numbers yet, but we're down seven compared to last year. We're up nine compared to two years ago, which would have been the fall of 2021, so kind of a little bit higher than I expected, but, you know, hopefully, we'll catch up and break even here pretty quick. We hosted a leadership summit for our activities participants, which is both athletics and fine arts. We contracted Greg Berg, and he worked with 41 of our participants on improving their leadership qualities and enhancing their leadership qualities that they have. Boys and girls soccer and volleyball have already started competitions this week. We hosted a football scrimmage with four schools on Saturday. Thank you to the Lions Club for feeding the players and coaches. Also, thank you to the Royal Boosters for feeding the athletes and parents at our fall CAP meeting, which was very much appreciated. And also, just kind of a little bit, I know this was mentioned earlier, but the thank you for the anonymous person who donated the money to help scholarship some of our athletes. Basically, the story behind that is that person, when they were younger, were in a situation where they needed help, and someone stepped forward and went above and beyond for them, and that was something that impacted them tremendously. So, now, they don't do it every year, but they do it frequently, and any amount is a tremendous blessing. But they just called up earlier in the season and just said, you know, "What's been going on so far, what are your needs?" And I said, "Well, so far, our total is, six athletes have requested help with funding," and she said, "We'll take care of it." So, that was a great phone call to get, and I was very appreciative of that. But there is a backstory, they just want to pay that forward. And so, those are our great phone calls, and we were happy to do that, so. You guys have any questions?
Thank you. Mr. Schuler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll be brief tonight, we've had a lot of reports, but just want to highlight our 11 new teachers that were orientated last week, Wednesday and Thursday. Really great to see the dynamics there of just the excitement and just willing to jump in and make a difference, so that was, that was great. Again, we did the tours of Watertown and Mare, and thank you to Board Member Danielson, who actually came along on the bus ride and had lunch with us at Agave and Mare. And thank you to the McNeely family who helped sponsor that, and also to Russ Runk, who sponsors our first-day lunch from Ameriprise. So, we have two nice donors there that have some really good food for these new teachers on staff, so we had a really good couple of days there. And then lastly, today, again, like we've heard echoed today, great to see teachers back in the building and the excitement of a new school year, and the kickoff this morning, and then the building staff meetings were great. And again, it's fun to see us moving forward with a new direction, with a new strategic plan, kind of great to see. So, that's all I have.
Any questions? All right, thank you. Moving right along, board member reports, any committee meetings, updates?
I'll just report, the foundation is, you know, October 7th will be here before we know it, and that's their Casino Royale night. They're also still in the midst of selling tickets for the side-by-side. Those can be purchased either at, right across the street, at the Marketplace Foods, at Core Trust Bank, Darren's got them in the district. Any of the board members from the foundation have them as well. So, they're still trying to get those sold out. They only sell 500 tickets, so I think we've got about 100 to go. That's kind of the update, just a reminder that that's where all of our scholarships for seniors, for graduating seniors come from, as well as some other special projects. So, it's a, it's a great 501(c)(3) that's helping fund lots of good stuff for our students.
Anything else?
Southwest met last Tuesday, and unlike us, I will say, staffing-wise, they're missing, you know, they're short, unfortunately, some positions. Good news, though, I would say, they, they really have added to their website some little clips, really short ones, just because a lot of people, I don't think they go through five minutes of things, just kind of interviewing people that are working for Southwest and really promoting the place, so that was actually really nice, and hopefully, they get some more people that will work there. As you know, it's pretty tough to be with some of the kids. They're definitely having a little bit more issues than, you know, other places, so I wish them good luck. And then, once again, they have the bus tour, which I went, I think, last year, and that would be September 15th, eight to one now, as you noticed, it's a Friday. I think Darren really thought it would be a good thing to see people, you know, the students in action, so you don't go there when it's empty and you don't really see what's going on. So, and any other board members can go, and it's a really fun time. You get lunch and get to see all the different buildings. I highly recommend it.
Thank you. Anything else? All right, with that being the case, we can take a, how about a six-minute recess to 7:25, and then we'll go into a closed session at that point. All right, thank you, guys.